I call the Committee of the Whole Meeting to order for Wednesday, October 22nd, 2025. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda of the Committee of the Whole Meeting of Wednesday, October 22nd, 2025, please? Counselor Ray, Counselor Popov, favor, pose, thank you. Look, we have one item on the agenda today regarding BC Transit Service Plan, but we're also going to discuss the fare review. So we have Danica White, Government Relations Manager, and Midhat Malik, Business Development Advisor for us today to present the materials. Welcome, and the floor is yours.
So I'm Danica White. I'm the Government Relations Manager with BC Transit, and typically the first point of contact for your staff on all things transit. Today, I'm here with several of my colleagues. I have Midhat Malik, who will be providing some information about the upcoming fare review that is just being sort of kicked off now. Also have Jennifer Getz, a transit planner for the region, and Kevin Sturgeon, who's the manager of planning with BC Transit, as well as Aaron Toop from Toop Consulting. And with that, I will turn it over to Midhat, who is joining us virtually today.
Thanks so much, Danica, and hello, counsel. I'm looking forward to introducing the fare review to Cranbrook. So the fare review is something that we do every three to five years typically across the province to just take a look at the fare structure as it exists, consider ways to adjust it a little bit to optimize revenue, maintain affordability, and attract and retain ridership. We look at new policies that are being adopted across the province and consider if it will fit in your transit system. And we look at new things that are happening, like, for example, last year, the YUMO was introduced in Cranbrook, the Electronic Fare Collection System. And so this year, we're really wanting to optimize use of YUMO and considering what opportunities there exist now that we have YUMO that we can introduce into Cranbrook. Obviously, considering equity is like a really important part of our review. And we, in this specific fare review, we're looking to simplify the fare structure. And always, we want to increase ease for passengers and boost ridership. So when I look back at Cranbrook's fare review history, the last time we can see that a notable fare change occurred was in September 2011, which is about 14 years ago. And otherwise, there has been one thing that was reduced in September 2014, which was when the student semester pass was introduced. We've got a free transit for youth 12 and under that came into place in fall of 2021, when the province mandated that, paired with additional funding. So all to say that it hasn't changed in a long time. So there's definitely, there can be an appetite and like a reason that we would consider changing fares at this time. And then, of course, when we look at our fare reviews, we always want to go back to our fare strategy guidelines. And this is something that we like, look to align to across the province. And so what that looks like is a single-ride fare. We consider that the base fare. With the day pass, we just want it to be two times the day pass. Right now, it's a little bit less than that in Cranbrook. So we'd be looking to potentially aligning that closer. The 10 rides is suggested to be nine times the base fare. Right now, it's just a little bit underneath 25 cents less. So we'd be looking to adjust that. The adult 30-day pass is aligned. We recommend a 20 to 30 times range of the base fare. Right now, it's at 22 times. The concession 30-day pass, which is available for students and seniors, is recommended to have a 15% discount off the adult fare. Right now, it's at a 30% discount, which is greater than what we would recommend. So we'd be looking to get and bring that closer towards our guidelines. And then with the student semester pass, which is a 20% discount off of the already discounted concession pass, we recommend a 20% discount for people who are doing a longer-term pass. And that is currently aligned. And of course, when we are looking at our fares, we also want to consider equity and ensure that we are having the same fares for both conventional and custom transit. And even though it does cost more to run a custom transit, we'd just be looking to bring that parity to conventional. What I, as part of the fare review, we look at other transit systems to consider where, like how Cranbrook is doing and what makes sense for Cranbrook. And depending on other systems of a similar size and ridership. And so when we look at our BC Transit systems, Cranbrook has similar prices too. But we also know that Salt Spring Island is currently doing a fare review, and those prices will go up. Nelson's adult and concession passes are greater than Cranbrook today. And then when we look at fare structures across Canada, the fares are just in general higher. So we just look at the full picture to see what's a good price. And today had not looked at what it was back then, when it was first introduced. Another thing we look at is how it's, like what products are being used and where revenue is coming from. I apologize for my graph is not showing up correctly right now. But that should be better. Okay, so here we have like a year-by-year comparison, and then also just a pie chart for the year. And we're seeing that a majority, like a really good portion of fares come from U-Pass, which is a prepaid fare program. Would be, we really love that we have such a good portion of that. Things that are great out are revenues that we don't actually have control of during the fare review process.
Can we just stop for a sec? Your screen share has stopped for some reason, so.
Oh, well, thanks for letting me know that.
There we go, that's better.
Okay, cool. I just, the white text disappeared, so I turned to black. But yeah, so we're just also like looking at where people are using, which products they're using the most. It's clear that single-ride and 30-day passes are the most popular. Day passes not used that much. And in our fare reviews, we also look to like consider additional revenue sources. So like U-Pass was a prepaid fare program that really supports the revenue of Cranbrook. We have a new program that we'd like to consider introducing in Cranbrook called ProPass. And this is a partnership that we look for with employers. And as long as there is an employer that has at least five people, five employees willing to enroll in a 12-month term, they're able to get a 15% discount off of the 30-day adult price. And we would just like help to facilitate that through payroll deductions so that it's a smaller amount of money that comes out every single month. It's every, it's every two weeks instead. And it's a set-it-and-forget-it model. So it makes it that people invest in transit, become transit users, and then also the transit system gets additional revenue. So this is something that we think could really work in Cranbrook and would look to recommend that. But of course, like, we'd love your feedback to see what you think. We also have a new program called EcoPass. This is newer than the ProPass program, but it has rolled out in a few different communities already, and we've seen it being successful. And this is a bulk purchase discount program that can be used by organizations that want to invest into transit for a subset of the population. So for example, in San Edge, they passed a bylaw that allowed that everyone in, that is a developer that develops along the transit high-priority corridor, has to invest a certain amount of money into transit to, in exchange for parking variance. And we have like a discount structure presented on the screen here, but we've seen another great way of generating revenues for transit. Another thing we'd consider is aligning some of our policy across the province into the different systems. So we are noticing that we have like an opportunity with BC Transit to offer a automatic day pass with YUMO, where people can tap twice in one day and then automatically get a day pass applied to their, to their YUMO card. And this is great because this kind of encourages more transit ridership because people are like, okay, we've already paid twice. Why don't we take the transit midday, in the evening, later in the evening, wherever it is, for those casual users? And this is something that we've considered replacing the transfer policy with because we have found that the transfer policy in many systems create a lot of conflict with drivers when the 90-minute transfer window just expires or it's being misused. So we find that a solution to that is the automatic day pass and fare capping. You know, offer a day pass for cash users onboard the bus in that case to replace the transfers. But again, this is like at your discretion, and we'd love to hear if that's something that you think could benefit the people in Cranbrook. In terms of our timeline, we're here today to kind of ask your feedback about timelines, some of the things that I've talked about. We have the opportunity to like align with the survey that's going to be done in February with the transit service expansion. So we could ask some questions in February with the survey, and then we would like present a recommendation to you in spring or summer. And then we could do a fare change implementation 12 weeks after a fare approval just because that's the guidelines that marketing has requested from us. But we could also delay it to be like in line with the implementation of the service expansion in 2027, the fare change. And another thing is that we could also just skip the community engagement survey. Many communities doing a fare review don't do a survey if they feel like it's pretty straightforward. And so then, in that case, we would present a fare review to you earlier, maybe even by this December. And then we could have a fare change in place for April of next year. So with that, I will give the floor to you and accept any questions, any feedback.
Oh, there we go, that better. Yeah, thanks, Midhat. I think we probably do have a couple of questions for her. Wendy, start with Counselor Peabody, if he's got anything, we'll go around the table.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious, why, why is BC Transit using like a payment app as opposed to just having like tap or debit available on the buses?
Um, that's a great question. A lot of transit systems have payment cards. Not a lot have payment apps, so that is something that BC Transit has excelled in getting. But we, as part of Phase Two of YUMO, we are introducing the debit and credit tap. So the YUMO is just like a validator on the buses as well, so that would accept that. And it's planning to roll out as a pilot next month in a few communities. And then once like any hiccups are solved, it's going to be rolled out across the province next year.
Okay, thank you. And just a supplemental question. You mentioned changing the policy for, I think it was like the amount of time for a transfer?
Yeah.
Do, do we have data as far as like how many users are actually transferring from one bus to another, or if they're just like, no, a single ride?
Yeah, so thankfully with YUMO that was introduced last year, we're able to get a bit more data on that. So we have a data analyst team that can pull all sorts of information, like the number of times a user tapped twice and got a transfer or tapped twice in one day and didn't get a transfer, like because it was outside of the transfer window. So we do have that. We don't understand the behavior of people using cash. So that is always going to be a limiting factor, but at least we have insight.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, yeah, because I think as far as changing the policy goes, it seems like a good idea, but I, I don't know if it's necessary or not. So I, I think we're just relying on, on your expertise and what, what you think is best.
Absolutely. We'll provide that to you next time we see you.
Counselor Berset.
Thank you. Just further to that comment, many users in Cranbrook are transferring to go, like they come into the central hub, and then they're going to college or they're going to the mall. And so there is often that two-bus use. And I would think there might be anecdotal, at least, information locally on that. Is that, is that correct when I'm talking to people that are here in the audience? Okay, can someone answer?
Let's see, a lot of heads nod.
Respectfully to the, yeah, that's correct, yes. So transfers happen at the downtown.
Yeah, so it's just whether or not it's the 90-minute problem. Like if, if people are going to the mall, zipping in, getting a few things, and then trying to use their transfer again, that would be the issue. That they start with a transfer at the mall, I think, would be the tell on that. Also, what I was wondering about when you mentioned about when local government gives a parking variance, that we could request a donation from the developer to the transit system. Would that be a donation to our local transit system or just to BC Transit in general?
Yeah, no, all revenues generated in each transit system go directly to the municipality to cover the municipal portion that, for transit. So municipalities pay typically 53% according to BC Transit inflated formula. And so anything fare revenues, EcoPass, U-Pass, ProPass, all of those would support the municipal portion.
No, that, that's, that's something that we should really, as a council, be talking about, and staff should be considering that when we're being asked for parking variances, that maybe they could recommend a level of that in the report. And because I think that has real potential for us here locally. Also, on that, younger people use those YUMO apps. And my impression is that the cash fare is quite low for a single year, like honestly, $2.25 for, for a ride around town. That, that's kind of amazing. So I'm not sure that low rates are encouraging ridership amongst non-monthly pass users. So I think, you know, we could look at increasing the cash fare, even like to $3, let's say, instead of $2.25 for an adult fare. But not, and then, but when it comes to passes, because that's your regular user, right? We want to keep them. So maybe if there is an increase there, maybe less of an increase. So to incentivize that regular user and, and truly, like honestly, $3 for, that is less than a lot of coffee. So yeah, that's my feeling on it.
Thank you. Thank you. Similar to Counselor Blissett, is there a recommendation for an increased base fare?
So today is just an introduction to council that we're going to be starting this work. And then the next time we come to you after doing more analysis and looking at different options with staff, then we present to you a recommendation. So not.
Thank you. And I would concur with Counselor Blissett that when we're looking at parking variances, if we could integrate a link to supporting our transit system, that makes a lot of sense.
Counselor Popov.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. Excuse me. I also like the idea of what we were just talking about with the subsidy. Two questions, and you're the experts on, on this, not me. But in a broader context, will these rate fare changes create greater or less city taxpayer subsidy? Right now, the city taxpayer subsidizes the transit system. If we introduce what you're proposing, and I don't know exactly what you're proposing yet, will that cause an increase or reduction in the tax subsidy from the taxpayer?
Yeah, thanks for your question. So it's always a balance when you look at a fare review and look at fare systems, revenue sources. And so you're right, it is between user pay and taxation. And when we look at a fare review and we see that it's been $2.25 since 2011, of course, we would recommend a slight increase. And that would, along with the other prepaid fare programs that we know will add more revenue to the system, would reduce the requirement for taxation.
So I'll take that as a yes, that there'll be a taxpayer reduction in the subsidy. And also, we're all, we're all around the table here wanting to find ways to encourage more ridership. We'll have further conversations on that. But the, the fare change that you're talking about, will that have an increase or decrease in ridership?
So there's things that we can introduce that support increase in ridership. Again, this automatic day pass policy is something that we've seen is a way to boost ridership because people that typically would just go like on their one-way in the morning, and then they go their one-way home. They're already paying twice, but then they have to pay because they're taking the two buses in the morning, already have paid twice. It just encourages them to for sure take the transit in the evening, and then even more so. It adds more trips to their day. So that's something that we have seen increases ridership, so potentially.
Thank you, Malik. Thank you very much. I think that's all the questions we have. One more coming from the CEO, Virchell.
I'm just, I'm interested in that day pass because to me, that concept would be a way to really encourage ridership. So rather than sort of those technical things that keep people off the bus where you've got to worry about transfers within a certain amount of time, or you want to go to the mall in the morning, and you don't want to worry about watching your clock and head out in the afternoon. To me, you know, that would really be probably one of the best ways we could encourage ridership. And even if, you know, there's the concept of losing people buying two passes for the day if this is a little cheaper, the fact that there's a lot of empty seats on the buses driving anyways doesn't matter if we get more people using the buses. So I just wondered if you had stats out there on if that had changed behavior at all where that was introduced? Because to me, you know, intuitively, I think it would just because I think if, if there was a bunch of kids that wanted to go to the mall, they'd be much more comfortable knowing they can come back whenever they want versus having to catch the 90-minute window or whatever.
Yeah, I'll look at the, I'll request that data from the data team and bring that back next time.
And we'll go back to Counselor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding the community engagement survey, we've been engaging with our community by surveys, including statistically valid surveys. So I do think this is an important component that I would like our council to consider including in the process. I realize it adds a few months to the process, but I think I would hope we could gather some information from our current users as well as folks who aren't yet using the transit system. So just wanted to mention that I think it would be important for us to do that survey. And yeah, that hopefully it would be conducted in a way that it, there would be statistical validity as well. There has been some coverage in the news recently regarding the city of Kelowna and changes, I believe, to their transit fares. And it sounds like it's been quite controversial. So just in the interest of learning from other communities, could we have a short summary of what that issue is? And is there any relevance to Cranbrook?
Yeah, so the Kelowna situation is very interesting because we did do a survey with Kelowna about the fare change. And they increased to $3 right away. I believe their fares previously were $2.50. Typically, we would recommend like a more gradual increase, but they wanted additional ridership right away. They went to a, like automatic fare capping policy, and they removed their transfers. And there, it takes time for people to like get around and understand that there is like a different way to maximize use of using the bus. And with Kelowna, it's a really big system, and they have a lot of advocacy groups. So we're hearing a lot from Kelowna. The same, like a fare increase has also been increased in five other communities in October 1st, also with the removal of transfers and the automatic day pass. But we haven't heard anything from them. But so it's just like every community is different, and every community has a different subset of advocacy groups that will bring things to the media. So I don't think it is a case study that we need to be like shy from.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Back to Counselor Peabody.
Yeah, my apologies. I did have one more question. How do users know about the YUMO app? How is that advertised?
Ooh, I'm, I'm not sure how it's advertised in Cranbrook, but yeah, so I'm not.
Yeah.
Not exactly from Cranbrook.
Yeah, no, no, thank you. And maybe that's something that needs to be looked at because like I've, I've used the bus half a dozen times in the last little while. And like this is the first time I've actually been notified about the YUMO app is sitting in the council meeting. So I just wondered, do we need like signage at the bus stops, on the, on the poles around town? If that's something that's beneficial to get more, more people using the app?
Yeah, I'll bring that back to my team that is responsible for that and then suggest that they do something.
I think Danica has a comment as well.
Thanks, and respectfully through the chair. So there, we did do a sort of marketing campaign before and after YUMO was introduced. And now currently, we do market it to mostly existing riders through sort of ads within things like the Riders Guide, on the BC Transit website, as well as onboard in sort of posters and interior bus cards. So we are definitely targeting current users as well as all of the venues that sell fare products. They are selling YUMO cards as well. So thank you for your feedback that it isn't as widely known as, as maybe we would hope. So we'll, we'll certainly look at ways that we can increase sort of public awareness about, about the app.
Further, Counselor? Well, thanks again, Midhat. And I think now we're going to move on to the future service plan. And Danica, is, Danica, are you gonna? Okay, yep, good.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks so much for having us here today to talk to you about the Transit Future Service Plan. And are my slides, will they be shared? Super. Great, thanks so much. And I'll just say next one, ready to change to the next slide. So the purpose today, I will say next slide. Oh, this is the fare review? Sorry, I did see it for a second. Yeah, it is a different slide deck. I sent it as a, as a PDF. It, that's the one.
There we go.
Awesome, too many slide decks. Super, thank you. We can go to the purpose slide. Awesome, thanks. So the purpose of this presentation is to present an overview of the key findings from the first round that we So the purpose of this presentation is to present an overview of the key findings from the first round that we did of public engagement for the Transit Future Service Plan. I'll be referring to it as the TFSP or the plan. We'll be then presenting a network restructure proposal for the Transit Future Plan. And then we will also be engaging in a discussion of the proposal afterwards. Firstly, we'll review the purpose of the plan, why we do these projects called the Transit Future Service Plans. We'll be presenting key takeaways from the first round of engagement, provide an overview of the network restructure proposal. We'll be recommending some next steps and then we'll open it up to discussion. Thanks. You know when I'm changing slides. So why the Transit Future Service Plan? Uh, we use these plans to identify service and infrastructure needs over the next one to five years. That's our general outlook for the plans. It's to improve network efficiency before expanding services. So we're looking at reallocating existing service hours before we look at expanding services with the goal to grow ridership. It's also to align with existing, um, with existing and to inform future planning and transit studies. And we'll be building on prior initiatives, including the twenty-eighteen service discussion document. But this will include a more in-depth routing analysis. We'll have public engagement. And we'll be evaluating some of the emerging technologies through B C Transit such as on-demand. So this is a timeline of the project. Note that the blue text is where we have uh, touch points with council. So that is really important to us. We want to make sure that this is a collaborative process with council and the city of Cranbrook. Uh, we want to make sure that the plan feels and looks and is uh, looks like and is Cranbrook's plan. And we will be looking to get some feedback from you um, today. So we started back in twenty-twenty. Sorry, I'll stay on that slide just briefly. Thank you. Um, so we started back in twenty-twenty-three with the terms of reference. And we reviewed the existing transit system, developed a technical report, including some ridership statistics. And we then prepared public engagement plan and some design materials um, for the engagement, first round of engagement. And that brings us to where we are today. We're going to be presenting to you the engagement results and the proposed network redesign. Um, and then the plan is to engage in a second round of public engagement. We'll be coming back to council after that with the findings, incorporating any feedback into the draft plan. We'll then present to you the draft plan with possible service implementation being the earliest twenty-twenty-seven. Um, and then it's important to note that approving the plan does not mean any investment. Um, so any investment would require a separate approval process from council. And what we are proposing today would be a reallocation of existing service hours. Um, so it would be service hours neutral. And we can, I'll also mention here that we can work with our marketing team to develop a marketing plan to help implement or raise awareness of the network redesign. All right, next slide. Thank you. So from the first round of engagement, we had a hundred and fifty-five respondents to our public survey, five participants for our focus group, and seven participants in our key interest holder interviews. Next slide. From our key interest holder interviews, we heard a strong demand for access to improved or access to slash improved access to our neighboring communities such as the Acomm Community and Kimberly. And we hear that time and time again. The main barriers to transit were the ease of personal vehicle use and transit not taking people where and when they needed it. And in general, very positive attitudes toward on-demand. We'll be talking a little bit more about on-demand later in the presentation. Next slide. Thanks. From the focus group, people said that they wanted earlier morning and later evening service, more bus shelters and amenities, education and support for on-demand service if that is going to be introduced, and more regional connections, um, especially the Acomm Community and the airport. Next slide. So some key takeaways from the public survey were um, especially around these trade-off preferences. So for example, seventy-four percent of people said they um, were okay with fewer routes, but longer routes. They wanted longer routes that connect to more destinations. The remaining individuals said, actually, no, we want more routes. Um, seventy-one percent of people said they want uh, preferred longer walks to bus stops as long as it meant more frequent service, especially in peak times of day. The remainder of people said, no, actually, we would prefer to keep those walks to the bus stops shorter. Um, so what I've done on the next slide here is just broken out the next slide there. Awesome. I've got some points for each of these. So in terms of the fewer routes but longer routes that to connect, that to connect to more destinations, this is the basis of the proposed network redesign. So we really incorporated that feedback. Uh, longer walks uh, for seventy-one percent of people who said longer walks to bus stops, but more frequent service, especially during peak times. Again, the proposed redesign will sometimes require that people walk a little bit farther to bus stops. Um, but will have more frequent service, especially in the higher ridership areas. Um, the fifty-four percent of people said more, more frequent service even if shorter hours of service into the evenings and on weekends. Um, well, frequency is being prioritized and um, there will be no new hours for evening and weekend service proposed, but there is an opportunity for growth um, in the future, of course. Um, sixty-seven percent of people said that they would actually rather have regional destinations rather than local destinations when looking at expanding services. Um, this is out of scope for this plan, but it's important to note for future. Um, and then we had seventy-three percent of respondents said they preferred, they would prefer scheduled fixed routes that don't require booking in advance. Though in the case of on-demand service, non-conventional, non-fixed route service, respondents would prefer to book trips through an app than by phone. Um, so we aren't proposing, sorry, we are proposing fixed routes. We're not proposing to eliminate fixed routes altogether. So that's good for, for, from that perspective. Um, and then the proposed on-demand service won't require booking in advance. And there will be an option to book by both phone and by app. Great, next slide. We'll take a look at your existing network here. Um, Route One in blue, dark blue there. Um, you can see it has a loop in the middle which could be optimized. In the south, there's a high density of people using transit, but it's one-way service and there are three routes within very short distance of each other. And there are lots of short routes. Um, they all meet downtown as you can see and, but they don't all do so at the same time. Many trips do need a transfer and transfers can be quite quick or quite long depending on the time of day. Just as an example, uh, one annoying transfer that riders currently have to make is going from the college to Walmart. Uh, it's a popular trip, uh, but they have to transfer downtown. And with this network design, we can't easily increase or reduce service due to the complex transfer system. Great, next slide. So when we look at this map of bus stop level data, um, we can see that there are actually four main destinations. Got downtown, Tamarack Mall, the college, and the Walmart area. And we can also see that there are several other bus stops with lower activity showing where people are mainly coming from. So visually, there isn't very, too much variation between those smaller circles. Um, so I've put together the next slide here with a little bit of a change in scale so you can better see a little bit those, that variation in the smaller circles. We removed the downtown exchange for scaling purposes. Um, so here we can see a little better um, what the uh, differences between those uh, kind of orange, origin points. Though we're not clear, too clear what the variation is. So that would be kind of a question that we would have through the second round of engagement. Great, next slide. So getting into the network restructure proposal. This slide here shows your, what we're proposing to be the main line, Route A. So it'd be a sixty-minute cycle time. That's how long it takes to get uh, there and back and recovery. Um, so uh, yeah, and we'd be looking to have probably two buses on this route with a thirty-minute wait time at popular times of day. So with this route, people have a one-seat ride, no transfer to the downtown, the Walmart, and the college. Um, there is room for growth uh, on this route. So more frequency, higher frequency or more span, earlier trips in the day later and to the evening would be possible with um, investment. Uh, there is no variance between these trips. So each trip would go from the downtown to the college, Walmart, back to the college, and then do that south loop that you see there. And we know that most people walk up to about four hundred meters to a bus stop. So we've added the gray buffer zone there, which is four hundred meters. Um, that said, people did say in the public survey that they would be interested in walking a little bit farther to bus stops if it meant a little bit more frequency. Great, next slide. So this is uh, what we're proposing to be the secondary route. Route B, the southeast route, be about a forty-five-minute cycle time. Um, one bus likely, and so a forty-five-minute frequency or wait time before, between each trip. Here, people have a one-seat ride, no transfer to the downtown and to the college. There's less room for growth on this route, but still room for growth. Great, next slide. So this is our third route. It's a Route C. It's actually our on-demand service that we're proposing. So within the red border, um, there is what we would be proposing to be the on-demand service zone. So service would be within there. It's within the city limits minus the airport and Shadow Mountain. Um, and this service zone does align with the existing Handy Dart service. So a little bit more to come in on demand in a minute. Uh, next slide. So here's what the uh, redesign would look like with all three components. Route A would be service happening at most times of day. Route B would be service more at peak times with on-demand happening all the time for that coverage. Um, and we can coordinate the schedule for uh, bell times downtown, um, around Mount Baker bell times. Um, so that uh, yeah, so that would be something to note. And the proposed network now with um, is scalable for if there is a desire to add or eliminate buses or service. And this is a reallocation of existing service hours. So service hours neutral.
Question from Counselor Bussett?
Do you have a slide that overlaps the previous route onto that so we could see what's been lost? You do?
Uh, the pre, I, I can absolutely provide that.
Yeah, that'd be good to see, nice to see.
Yeah.
Counselor Popoff.
Yes, thank you. So A and B, um, there is, you're eliminating all transit up the industrial road two to where we have a big pocket of residential. Um, so that's being eliminated. And also I noticed in current and also proposed, where you see Thirtieth Ave, the top right of the corner. Above Thirtieth Ave, there is a large population of residents and it's never been serviced. Have, have, do we know why it's never been serviced and why it's going to continue to not be serviced?
Thirtieth Avenue, I believe there currently is Route One serves um, the outbound, sorry, the inbound trip. So coming back from the Walmart, um, the Route One does service that area. But yes, we would be um, not eliminating service to that area. On-demand service would cover that area. So in the next few slides, I do have um,
The reason I asked about Thirtieth Ave, it's not the Thirtieth Ave and to the left, it's the, it's the, it's the right of Thirtieth Ave. Um, it's an uphill, uphill residential area, quite a large residential area. Um, is it because it's a hillside? Uh, there's no turnaround points. I don't know why, but there's quite a significant population up there. Um, and they've, they've never been serviced. And you talk about a four, four-hundred-meter walk. Well, that's different in the wintertime at going up a hill, uh, rather than servicing that area. So I'm just wondering if that might be something, the rationale for never servicing it. Um, have we ever surveyed the residents up in that neighborhood to see if there is a need for it? It's just that's, um, they're not going to walk all the way down to Thirtieth and then have to walk back up the hill with their groceries and everything else. But if there's some opportunity there, it might be worthwhile.
Thank you very much for that.
CEO, Bocher, and then uh, Counselor Bussett. Well, Counselor Ray?
Just, if I could, maybe I'll just give council a little overview and correct me if I'm wrong, but what we've been working with with B C Transit is, you know, the old model was about trying to run buses into all these little areas. And what we were finding is a lot of the buses were driving around empty. So what this whole exercise has been about and why we went back to the drawing board and, you know, Aaron's been involved with B C Transit to really look at our routes and find a couple of what's called backbone routes. So this is where we'd run high-frequency buses that would be full of riders to have a good, strong backbone bus service with the periphery serviced by the on-demand rather than um, going back to a model where we're spiderwebbed around town with a lot of routes, but not a lot of people getting on those buses. So there's two completely different models and that's really what this exercise has been about and what the consultation will be about is doesn't make more sense to have these high-frequency backbone routes with riders using buses a lot or go back to having buses everywhere but not a lot of people on them. So that's what this exercise was and you know, certainly you guys are the experts, but I, I've been involved just from the, the back order here.
Thanks, Mark. Uh, Counselor Ray then Counselor Bussett? No, just Counselor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so just seeking clarification, I'm, I am directionally challenged, so let's all recognize that, but I'm looking at Thirtyth Avenue South, which is near Highland School. And currently, the number-two Highland's route has been servicing that area. So I'm just seeking clarification, Counselor Popoff. Um, I am not clear what area of the city you are referring to.
If I can respond, um, the top right corner, so you see Cockney Creek and then uh, Thirtyth Ave. Um, that's the north side, yeah. So that's where Mount Royal Park Road is, that whole, whole area, which is all uphill. Um, but quite a significant population. Now, so while I got the mic, and if that can be serviced by on-demand, um, and if that makes sense. Well, it's Panorama Heights, but Mount Royal and Park Road, right? That whole upper hill up there, right? And if that can all be serviced by on-demand, then I'm in favor of that. But I just, it's curious that it's never been serviced?
If I may?
You may.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so Thirtyth Ave North, I see on our current, um, our current bus routes is the Tamarack Route. It's blue. There, it is showing that there has been service. So anyways, that's okay. We're looking at our, our new setup. So um, I'm in support of uh, a simpler approach. And, and I'm really excited about the hybrid approach with the on-demand. I mean, I think we know people are, of course, with Uber, right? This is the transit version of Uber. And I think that is um, a really good business model to try. And I, because we've struggled with ridership, right, the definition of insanity is to keep doing the same thing and expect a different outcome. So we need to try something different. So I'm really pleased to see uh, this different approach. And I think the on-demand service is gonna, is gonna be key and could help hopefully attract some new people to routes. And just as an aside, I think sometimes simple transit systems are good. So our family had the pleasure of traveling to Glasgow this summer. Glasgow's metro system is an oval. So if you miss your stop, you just stay on and eventually you'll go back to where you want to be. So I think um, you know, a simpler approach can be effective.
Counselor Bussett?
Um, the one thing I would add in, it's more for the city to think about, is, and please, transit experts, correct me if I'm wrong. But like one of the issues is it's so easy to park in Cranbrook. There's no, like when you're in Vancouver, you would never consider driving all the time because it is a nightmare. But when you're in Cranbrook, most people never consider taking the bus because it's so easy to park and drive in Cranbrook. And it's the same thing for cycling. If we ever really want to change that behavior, we have to make it miserable to park and drive. And you can imagine how popular that would be. But that's truly the case. So I think we have to accept, like I know around this table, I hear all the time, empty buses. So I think we have to accept, like, I know around this table, I hear all the time, empty buses, blah, blah, blah. That's how it's gonna be unless we make a change. We, we discourage sprawl, which, you know, we just heard about even one of those famous developments that, of course, we're not even going to service by bus because it is just plain sprawl. And so that's on this table. And it's also on what we decide on parking, how expensive that is. And, and where, so where we're developing, whether we're actually encouraging transit or not, and, and what we're doing about parking. So that's kind of, to expect the transit system to be filled with riders under our model is silly. In my opinion.
See you, Voltria.
So, you know, hundred percent, Councilor Besset through the mayor. And just, I got a note from Mike. He's watching online. And just to remind Council, like, our new zoning bylaw is looking at amenity contributions that, where there are developments. You know, rather than, you know, as a way to reduce parking, like, they talked about reduce parking and contribute to the bus system. Well, the amenity contribution around developments not only would go towards the bus, but the, what we're looking at in our new zoning bylaw is for bike paths, you know, active transportation routes, parking hubs rather than the parking lots. So you get a hub and then you bus from there kind of thing, like, like really changing the system. So in addition to the bus concept you heard about today, we're looking in our zoning bylaw about going a lot more broadly towards kind of what you're talking about, Councilor Besset. And the other thing to remember too is some neighborhoods typically use transit more where you have a lot of high-density, lower income versus, you know, maybe like the Development Council had talked about a couple nights ago where, you know, it's higher end, probably less ridership from a bus service and something like that than you would get in the downtown, for instance. So we've got to really look at where the riders are coming from and, and focus on that as the, you know, the backbone to ensure that we've got a good, strong, frequent bus service that has riders, and then we can pick up all those other areas hopefully through on-demand.
Councilor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. In developing these plans, are there any intentional connections or thoughts around cycling? Like how cycling and transit go together?
Yes. So part of the intent of the plan is to align with existing initiatives and projects, plans around active transportation as well.
Okay. And then just a follow-up, I'm just wondering, and it's not complete yet, but when the College of the Rockies completes their project to connect its Thirty-Fifth Avenue North, that will be a new connector. So I just want to make sure that BC Transit is aware of that.
Thank you. Yes, we did recently learn of that. Thank you.
Councilor Popoff.
Thank you. The ridership for middle schools, is it popular? Because you totally missed out Lori Middle School. It's in the center of the, of the, of the orange and purple. So is ridership not popular with middle schools?
It is, it is popular. We see especially a lot of students riding their existing routes, Three and Four and Fourteen. Mostly Mount Baker secondary students, but middle school students as well. We did align this with where we are seeing the most ridership. And fortunately, there is that four hundred meter buffer zone. But if that's some feedback that this high-level route proposal, it doesn't quite serve a middle school that's necessary, that's, that's really good feedback to get.
Yeah, it's just that where you see the corner there where there's Muriel Baxter Dog Park. From there, I don't know, I mean, is, is there going to be a, what would be the proximity for people, for students to walk, to get off this, one of these bus routes and then walk to Lori's school? What's that walking distance?
I don't know the exact walking distance by looking at it right now. But there would be through the on-demand that's proposed. What would happen is on the app, if a student went to book an on-demand trip or look at Google Transit, we'd be looking, it would recommend based on the user case, what the most direct fastest option would be to get to, for example, Lori Middle School. So it would, it may say, suggest to the, the user to take on-demand transit as the best option.
Okay.
Councilor Besset.
Thank you. So I will say, like, middle school age, four hundred meter, like, even though they're physically fit and stuff, four hundred meters is too long. It's just sort of, you know, you know what I mean? Like, honestly, two hundred meter, it needs to be closer. And it wouldn't be hard. I think you need to adapt the route to go by Lori's school because you're going by Parkland. And, and that's an important route because also Parkland, because of the French immersion, draws students from all over town. Lori is, is more the local because it doesn't have the French immersion program. But it's just the nature of the rider at that age means they, they need a short schlepping distance, you know? Because they don't even wear winter coats sometimes, just saying. So I, I do think that's, that is something I, I would hope could be addressed because I'm not sure that on-demand really meets that need.
Councilor Ray.
We're beating this one up thoroughly, but I, I, I hear what my colleagues are saying. I live in that neighborhood. If there was a stop right on that corner where you have the perpendicular right by Muriel Baxter, you can take the hypotenuse and cut right across like the Muriel Baxter parking lot. So I was going to suggest, I thought that was reasonable, but I hear what you're saying about proximity. Just so folks are aware, and as BC Transit may know, School District Number Five's bus system has been great about accommodating French immersion students. So they are able to take, get on a bus at Mount Baker and ride an SD five box to Parkland. So just to include that in your, in your thoughts. And I, I don't know what SD Five's internal bus service would be to Lori. So that might be worth checking into if you're not already aware of that. But yeah, I, kudos to SD Five for trying to help people out internally within their bus system also, help students out.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for the feedback. If there's interest, I will, I can continue on with the presentation just to quickly show some of the benefits to this network redesign in terms of travel time. So if we go to the next slide. Great. So this is one of the most popular trips that are made between the college and the Walmart. Currently, it takes about thirty to forty minutes with one transfer. The new redesign would be cutting this down to about twelve minutes with no transfers. Thank you. Next slide. There would be no change with this trip, college to the downtown. It's already quite efficient. So we would be maintaining that travel time of eleven minutes with no transfers. Next slide. Again, between the downtown and Walmart, two of the most popular rider destinations, already the most efficient for transit travel times. So it's, we're not going to mess with that. It's still going to be nineteen minutes with no transfer. Great, next slide. One of the things we're also hoping to do with the redesign is to add a little bit more consistency for travel times. So currently, depending on the time of day, to go from the college to the southwest of the city, it can take anywhere from twenty-two to fifty-two minutes with one exchange, sorry, one transfer at the downtown exchange. So the new travel time would be more consistent at fifteen minutes without any transfers. Great, next slide. To go from downtown to that same area, we would be looking at about nine minutes without any transfers. Next slide. Downtown to Highlands Elementary. So the Highlands area is an area which in the existing system has the second to lowest ridership with the Route Four Slatorville having the lowest ridership. So in this area, it currently does take eleven minutes by transit with no transfers. The proposed network would get you from downtown to about as far as, or as far as Twenty-Seventh Ave at Third Street South in about fourteen minutes. It's not quite at Highlands Elementary. We would, so someone getting from, going from downtown to Highlands Elementary School would be relying on on-demand as the best transit option. Next slide. Similarly, Grandview Heights to Walmart, that trip on-demand would be the best way to make that trip with the network redesign. Next slide. Again, Grandview Heights to the downtown. Next slide, on-demand would be great. Brings us into what is on-demand for those who don't know.
Councilor Popoff.
Thank you. Before we jump to on-demand, which I'm really excited to hear about.
Great.
So Route A and B, how many buses would be utilized for Route A and B?
Likely about three buses.
So we're scaling back the fleet to three buses and they'll be then redeployed for the on-demand?
We would be keeping the existing number of fleet vehicles, yes. And then we would be incorporating, yeah, the, we would be prioritizing on-demand. Likely have two vehicles for on-demand, one vehicle or two for Route A, and then one vehicle for Route B at peak times.
So three buses now on-demand. I'm excited to hear about that.
Great, okay.
Councilor Ray.
Thank you. Just before we move on to on-demand, as you're likely aware, our food bank is up in the industrial area. And so we have had conversations about there being a bus stop relatively close to the food bank. So now the folks who are utilizing the food bank would use the on-demand service. Great. I just think it's important to highlight that because, yeah, we want to make sure those folks can access that important resource. So I think the on-demand, yeah, might actually, could be an improvement in service, I think.
And the on-demand service would be prioritized sort of at all times of day. Great, thank you.
Councilor Besset.
Could we just consult with the social service groups on that? Because, I mean, I look at this and go, does their clientele have access to a phone that will be good enough for on-demand or not? I don't know. And I think the social, the people at the food bank would know. And then maybe some other, they might recommend, maybe like community connections or some other people that have more expertise dealing with people that might have challenges with phone use. I don't know. I don't know the reality of that situation.
Thank you very much for that feedback. For on-demand, on-demand transit uses technology to dispatch a bus to locations that are dictated by the customer. And you don't need a smartphone. You can, you can book via a normal phone. Next slide. So on-demand offers customers shorter wait times than low-frequency fixed routes. It increases accessibility, decreases trip length by providing a more direct route. And the bus only travels where and when someone has requested it. Next slide. So we are piloting some on-demand service in Kelowna. It's been going very well. It's been over a year now that we've been piloting that service. Riders are very satisfied. It's got a four point five out of five average rating. And ninety-nine percent of the trips are booked now using a mobile app. Next slide. For Cranbrook, on-demand coverage would also overlap with fixed route service within the city limits minus the airport and Shadow Mountain would be the whole coverage zone. The app would be able to determine whether to provide an on-demand trip or a fixed route trip on a case-by-case basis, depending on what's best for the rider. Next slide. So our next step would be likely summon more engagement. And we would be looking to confirm key origin destination travel patterns, clarify demand for the airport service. Airport and regional services out of scope for the plan, but it's important to include and get that information for future opportunities. We'd also like to engage on the on-demand service option, engage public interest for the network restructure option in general. Next slide. So our recommendation today is that Council receive for information the engagement phase one report that was provided as well as this presentation. Next slide. Next steps, we would be hoping to, in January or February of 2026, do some more engagement or second round of engagement for the plan. Then in April of 2026, we would be likely coming back to present to you what we heard from that engagement. In the summer, we would hope to complete a draft plan and then return in the summer or fall for Council endorsement of the plan. So that concludes my presentation. Thanks so much for your patience. It's been, it was a long presentation, so I know it can be hard to listen. So thank you so much and thanks for the feedback thus far. Happy to take any more feedback if there is.
Councilor Peabody.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions about on-demand, if you don't mind. How, like, looking at some of the areas that are just going to be serviced by on-demand now, how is that going to work during peak times? Like, if you're getting calls from the north end of town and the far south end of town, all over, all at once, let's say, when kids are trying to go to school? How does BC Transit accommodate all the different calls in different areas?
Should I have to take that?
Thanks, through the chair. The on-demand app is designed to optimize the travel. And so if there's only one bus out there, so for example, now I'll premise this by saying we haven't determined where we would allocate the resources, but we would look to stick to a maximum of four vehicles in service at peak times. And so if that is two on Route A, one on Route B, that would leave one vehicle in service for on-demand in the peak. If the, if there's a customer requesting a ride at two opposite ends of town at the same time, the app would, would determine, or the algorithm behind the app would determine where to go first. It would give an approximate wait time estimate to each customer, an ETA estimate. And it could be, for, for one or the other, it could maybe be forty minutes in the future before they arrive at their destination. And that would vary from, from trip to trip, from day to day, and it would just depend on which rides are being requested when.
Okay. So, so I guess like for, for kids going to school in the morning, their travel time to school can vary day to day depending on the, you know, when they book the ride compared to someone else?
It can, yeah. The intention with the fixed routes is that most students would be able to get on a fixed route bus from the busier corners of the city. So the south side of the city tends to have more demand. And so there would be fixed routes to the southwest and to the southeast, and that's where we would look to align with the bell times, especially coming from the southwest and the southeast. If there are students that get used to using on-demand and some of them live in the farther north part of the city and some live in the farthest south where there is no fixed route, then the, I think what would eventually happen is they would learn how early in the morning they need to book a trip.
Gotcha.
And, and it would vary, but I think it would, they would just develop a habit to sort of understanding how much time to give themselves in the morning.
Okay, great. And does on-demand, does it take you to your, like, desired destination as well, or is there just a common drop-off area?
The on-demand system uses virtual stops. And so we assign, in the, in the backend of the app, we assign places along streets that we would work with staff at the city to determine where to place those virtual stops. And then the app would pick up and drop off people at one of the nearby virtual stops. And the app would tell people which virtual stop to get on at and which one they'll be dropped off at. It wouldn't always be the same. Sometimes it might be across the street from the one they got yesterday. It might be around the corner. And so it might change from trip to trip.
Okay. So just like, look at what's proposed here. Okay. So just like, lo- looking what's proposed here and like, I like the new route structure. Um, I, I would say I like it for more like non-peak times. But it, it might be worth looking into having, you know, broader routes for the, for the peak times that peak picks up from areas like what you're talking about in 30th Avenue North. Cause that's, that's the area that I live in. And there's a bus stop on 30th Avenue North that's quite busy at, you know, eight o'clock when kids are going to school. And that's already, like I was just kind of looking on the map here. You know, that's a seven, that bus stop's a 700 meter walk from most places in that Park Royal area. You know, now that's a kilometer and a half to the closest bus stop. So what, and like, I wonder if a hybrid approach would be better where, you know, the peak time in the morning, let's say, you kind of go to those broader areas. But then after that, then you shrink it back down to the, what's proposed here with the, the shorter routes. Uh, I, I don't know if that's something that's being considered, but um eh, just in my one hour of looking at this, um, and it just is, might put, I guess, more, more acceptance of the On Demand route and more usage of the On Demand route, but also, you know, keep the level of a service that people are used to right now. And, you know, I, I might put less, it might keep the usage up, I think is what I'm saying. No, now I'm said, telling their kids that they gotta walk, you know, a kilometer and a half or two kilometers to a bus stop. Parents will probably just drive them. Cause the kids will be complaining so much where, you know, if it's a hybrid approach, it might kind of accomplish both things that we want. Keep the amount of ridership that we want, but then also cut the costs and use the On Demand and the non-peak times.
I, I think there's a couple of comments in, in your question, or a couple of questions in your comment that, that I uh would address. And the first is whether routes should be different at different times of day. Um, we, we, there's a balance there. Um, that's certainly not uncommon to have different routes at different times of day, but it is confusing. When, when it, when there's a sort of a customized route designed around school times, if it's an extension to the route, uh, then everyone else, you know, go, for example, in that case of the, the northeast corner of the city, people going to Walmart, which is very popular, they would have that extra distance and extra time if, if it was extended. So we do, we do prefer to avoid what we call route variance, uh, because it's confusing. It's hard to understand. And, and then um on the topic of bringing uh people to school. So in Kelowna, the On Demand started uh in the first part of the pilot. Uh, it was only running off-peak and there was a, a fixed route bus to bring people to school. So designed around the school times, there was a fixed route service. Uh, after a while, it uh, it switched to be On Demand at the bell time as well. Uh, and there, and that's been working well. Um, so the On Demand in Kelowna uses a light duty bus. Um, and so it fits quite a few people still. And we have seen in the data that sometimes it'll head to the high school with up to nine people onboard, presumably nine students. Um, and so as, when there's a bunch of people from a similar area booking to go to the same place, it will go and pick them all up. And in some cases, it'll make two trips. So the first, the, the early bird kids will get there half an hour before school. And then the later kids will get there right on time or uh, or thereabouts. Um, and it'll carry maybe five to nine students at a time. So what, but what we um, what we could do on the routing is uh take a look at the southeast route. So Jen uh mentioned that the Route A has a 60-minute cycle time. And it's really close to going over 60 minutes. It's sort of a magic number for us. Uh, because it lets us put one bus for hourly service, two buses for half hourly service. And if, if it ever grew, you know, you could go to 20, 15 and so on, uh, by adding one and another bus. If we had it at 65 minutes, it's, the ti- the timing becomes a little more awkward for people to remember when it's coming every 32 and a half minutes or whatever. So the small extension on Route A would be difficult just for that reason. The southeast route has more flexibility because it was uh, as shown, it has a 45-minute cycle. We could extend it further south or further east um to, to make that a 60-minute. The bus would come every 60 minutes instead of every 45. So there's a bit of flexibility there. And then if that left the north as the main source of ridership at school time for the On Demand service, then there wouldn't be that tension with the bus trying to get to the south part of the city at the same time. So that might be something for us to look at is, is, is tackle, tackling the south part of the city with the fixed route and then leaving um the On Demand vehicle to concentrate in the north.
And one, one last question, if you don't mind. Um, so with the, you know, the, the pilot project that's been happening in Kelowna, um, have you, have you noticed a change in, in ridership? Like, has it increased or stayed the same or decreased? And I guess an additional, what's uh, has there been any change in cost of providing the service?
The ridership has increased in Kelowna in the area where On Demand is provided. Uh, I believe it has roughly doubled. Having said that, I will caveat by saying the ridership was quite low. So, so doubling a low number, you know, it sounds impressive, but oh. For full disclosure, the ridership was low before. And the cost of providing the service, so On Demand is not intended as a cost saver. What it does rather is uh, where, where it works successfully is it provides a more efficient service. So the cost of running a bus for an hour uh doesn't change. But in that hour, it's only going where people are asking for it to go. It's bringing them right where they want. Uh, it can increase ridership relative to the pre- the fixed route if the fixed route is really underperforming. And so it's, it's an efficiency tool, not a, a cost-saving tool.
Counselor Bussell.
Thank you. Um, you know, uh, when Counselor Peabody was mentioning about how, you know, keeping the regular routes during peak times and then going to On Demand off times, that to me sounded ideal. Cause I could see how that, you know, in my world would work. But um, I mean, I put it, I do trust the experts on this and the actual data on this too. Um, but that was more my vision of how going to On Demand would work. That, because it, it's, it's like at noon, when we don't see very many people riding the bus on any route. Those times of day, Monday to Friday are a little tough for, for people. Whereas the peak times, we were fine with going there. So I, I don't know how you accommodate that and, and I, I'll leave it to you to, you know, to figure this out. But um, that was kind of originally what I was thinking on this. Because I mean, I just know for myself, it's easy to get the bus during those peak times. And then off times, it's like, ah, I have to wait an hour. And, and so that's when, you know, the On Demand would be desirable. But that's just personal feedback.
Counselor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so just in terms of timing with the process, we're all aware that we're coming up to our next local government election in the fall of 2026. So I'm just wondering if it would be possible to aim to bring this back to this council prior to that election?
Um, yeah, that is, that is the answer. Through, through the chair, that is our target.
That sounds great. Um, we've touched on the school district number five issues and I'm sure your team is already working on this, but I think it'd be helpful to look in detail at the staggered bell times for the schools. Because of course they vary their times to make their own bus system work. So I think that's an important factor to have a, a look at as well. And then as I mentioned already, that S D five has their internal bus system as well that I think we need to consider just as part of our service to, to students. It doesn't address all the needs, but that transfer they do at Baker to then get kids to s- for, for short to Parkland is, is something to maybe connect with them about. I understand that the airport in Occam and, and even Shadow Mountain are out of scope currently. But if we, I think we do, it is important to look at those. And so I'm wondering, are there other funding sources that may become available to look at that as a separate project? If we look at going to the airport through Occam, that seems very logical, that we could do two in one, serving the airport and the community of Occam. So that would be my suggestion there. And I do think it is important that we think about Shadow Mountain. Uh, because looking at transit for Shadow Mountain actually helps mitigate and address some of the challenges associated with the urban sprawl that um, that is a situation, you know, that we have inherited. But I do think it's important that we recognize those are residents of the city of Cranbrook. And so, you know, the transit system is already a significant investment of tax dollars. So if there's any additional funding or other opportunities, you know, it, there are a couple of points in our strategic plan that are around being environmentally friendly. And this is one of those discussion points when we look at transit. So we um, I just think it's important that we recognize and support the residents of Shadow Mountain as much as we can as resident, residents of the city of Cranbrook.
Thank you, Counselor Popoff.
Thank you. Uh, the population in Shadow Mountain is growing uh day by day. Every time I ride out, go golfing out there, you see new, new housing going up all over the place there. So you might want to take a look at that for sure. And it could be a circle route if we're talking about Occam and the airport and Shadow Mountain and back to Cranbrook. But something in the future to think about. Um, so I may not have understood this. So the On Demand and the fixed, one and two, that'll be operating at the same time?
Through the chair, um, that, that is what we're proposing, yes, that they would run and overlap with each other. The way that would work for a customer is when they open the app to book an On Demand trip, the app would tell them that there's a fixed route available to, to accommodate the same trip and give them instructions on how to access it.
You didn't nail down what the cost is for On Demand. What is the cost for, in Kelowna, for an On Demand service?
The, the cost of On Demand is essentially a, a small cost for the hardware on the buses. The, so that's, there's a stanchion, there's the device itself, a tablet or a phone. There's a cell plan. Uh, so there's the technology cost. And then there's the fee to the vendor.
Right.
And the, the fee to the vendor would uh change depending on the vendor that's ultimately selected. So the vendor that's being used in, in Kelowna is under a pilot project. It won't necessarily be the same vendor. Before expanding throughout the province, there would be another bid process. And whichever On Demand vendor is successful uh would have uh their own cost model. But the general nature of the cost is in the uh single-digit thousands of dollars per year. That, that range, they're like a four-digit number per year.
So we're talking about maybe raising the general fares for the, the fixed routes to up to $3? And there's various, there are uh options with that. So am I to understand then that the On Demand might be double that as the case, up to $6 per ride? I mean, it's, we do want to increase ridership and we want the convenience of a- accessing the broader areas of Cranbrook. Uh, I just don't know what, what that cost is going to be per ridership.
The cost for a customer, we would, we would recommend using standard transit fares and that it's just an integrated component of the transit system.
So that's where it's getting at. If I go online or make the phone call to book a, a trip, it'll tell me fixed or On Demand, but it'll be the same price.
Right. We wouldn't, we would not recommend a different fare for the On Demand.
Very good. And it's not, and the On Demand is a door-to-door service, but it's close.
Correct. It travels from what we call virtual stop to virtual stop. And the virtual stops are, are placed all over the city and, and um, where, wherever's uh B C Transit and city staff determine they should go.
When does the pilot finish in Kelowna?
It was just announced last week that it's being extended. Uh, I believe for three more years. So I think that there, there's been some success there and so it's going to keep on going.
So it is a success. That's, that's encouraging. And I would, would really like us to learn from their successes and challenges. And let's get On Demand here sooner than later. Thank you.
Seal for Trump.
Um, thanks, Mayor Price. So just wanted to remind counsel, we did the regional transit study. And so there was some conversation here about, you know, the routes to Shadow Mountain, to the airport, to Occam, St. Eugene. Um, so that was all part of that regional transit study. So this process is about optimizing the in-town bus system that we have. Layered on top of that is the regional transit study that we've completed. And it was presented at the regional district. So that would be an additional new service. So we can take it on as a, a line item in our budget to add that. We can look at partnership with the regional district, was what was presented at the regional district, that opportunity. And, and then needing participation by Occam, St. Eugene in, in helping to make that a viable system and potentially the airport as well. So, so think of that as, you know, a regional system that would be layered on top. This conversation really is about optimizing the city's in-town system.
Thank you, Mark. And uh, thank you very much for the presentation. Certainly, I think it's a big step forward in modernizing the current system. Um, you know, in line now, I think more closely with the community needs and our geographical layout, which is challenging to say the least. And, you know, it, it is a max, not maximizing the efficiencies. I, I think um, one thing we've got to realize is it doesn't matter what community and there's no perfect model. So you know, by moving this and this, I can tell you, you can sit before any council and bring any model forward. And well, what if, or could we, or you know, um, so I, again, I like, I like what's there. I think we'll see over the next year, you know, with the feedback you're going to get. We're well on our way to having a very effective model, you know. I think it's been a long time coming and I thank everybody for all the work they put into it. I think the key is, as you mentioned earlier, balance. You know, you can't have everything. So we need to strike that, that balance, how things work. And I, I think uh, you know, what we're looking at right now, we're on the road to that. So thank you for that. Um, are we into the public engagement phase one? Are we going to speak to that right now or? No? We've got the public engagement report, right?
Yeah, that report was just attached to the presentation.
Pardon me? It was just an attachment?
It was just attached. Yeah, Jen's already spoken to it.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure if you want to go through that or not. Uh, further? Uh, with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Bussell, Counselor Peabody, all in favor? Thank you very much, guys. That was very informative.